Go ahead and get through. I'm recording now. I love it. So, um.
I was trying to get the shine off my head.
I have this so far. I went to the, um. I went to the Veterans Memorial last week Wednesday and I wrote down some of the bricks that people had purchased. I really didn't see anything. I saw one World War One, but there was nothing pre-World War One really there that people did bricks for. But this is the list I came up with of possible soldiers that we could do the banners for. The only thing is I don't have really photos of them. Or how you guys suggest we approach this to get photos?
Would you, would you like some help from somebody who has done this already?
Absolutely.
Let me see if I can get him to zoom in.
Okay, because I did invite the recruiters. I went to the military recruiter's office too.
They're not going to be much help because they're, they're more into bringing new youngsters into the Army, Navy and Marines.
Yeah, I also tried to contact a lot of VFW posts and, um. I think I did the ROTC from the school. He was, he said he didn't know if he could make it or not.
Okay. I'm going to phone him. This guy has done over three hundred of these already.
Who are you calling in?
His name is Ed Wexler. I've got to, I've got to phone him, actually phone him and find out if he's available to zoom in.
Okay.
Oh, why he's calling?
Who's calling?
Why Don's calling that guy? You said these are the names, but you don't have a picture for any of them?
Um, no, the only one I think we have is Lucius Chubb. Which, you know, and we may have, I'm not sure, one of the Curtis's. He was, if he's the doctor, if I'm thinking correctly.
Okay.
I have to recheck. We have some, um, of the pension records in the cabinets in the archives. So, but those are all mostly Civil War. So I created some files on the Google Drive of all the soldiers that I could pick up through the bricks at the memorial. I may have missed some because the snow was covering them and I couldn't get them uncovered. But at this time, I mean, there's like one, two, three, four. Thirteen. I mean, that's something to start with. I doubt we'll be able to get it done by this memorial. Day weekend if we're gonna, it might take us some time to get some, so we can get pictures.
Right. Well, what if we started with two, like literally two, put them at the entrance? The two that you might have pictures for and then we can show them up and, and start the drive for next year and do all of them.
I was hoping to get some groups to like adopt a banner.
Right.
But, um.
Okay, um, he's not answering his phone, so he is either in the middle of something or, or way. I left him a message. That if he, uh, does get it in time, uh, if he would be able to zoom in and meet with us.
Okay.
If you think you're gonna put this together this year and have, okay, good. Thank you. That's, that's gives me more confidence to start with.
It may take a couple of years, actually.
It's, it's taken, uh, I'm trying to remember, we designed the banners, the template for the banners. Three years ago, maybe I think this will be the fourth year. Uh, and now Ed is also doing a whole lot of different, uh, cities and communities, but he's out in the Port Huron area. And he has graciously said that he would be happy to, to help us out. I just hadn't, I hadn't talked to him and informed him that this meeting was happening today. So, but he is willing to help us out and, and talk us through everything. Tell you where to go and, and how to do it. One of the things that we could do in the paper is we could put the word out that we're looking for, you know, XYZ kind of people or, you know, are you looking for people who were, um, lost in, or killed while in service? Uh, are we looking for people who were killed only in battle? Uh, there's such a, a different level. And you've got to have that criteria first or you're gonna get somebody mad.
Okay, because I have right now MIA's and killed in actions.
Okay, see, MIA's are totally different than, than, because technically they're still alive.
Right.
Okay.
And, and, and that, and that's my, I've never been in the service and, and so I, I can't speak from experience, but I, from listening to Ed and from hearing other service people's conversations. There's, there's a big difference between them. They, they don't want to honor an MIA because they might be alive. They wanna, they wanna represent the MIA's and, and maybe that's another project altogether.
Right.
Done because.
With the KIA.
Right, so you're either gonna stick with killed in action or killed, killed in service is really what the, that, and that's what they're doing, the ones in, uh, in Port Huron are. They're, they're all anyone who lost their life while in the service of their country.
Okay.
So they don't have to be like a battle, just.
They don't have to be in a battle, you know, they were, they were.
Brenda, like that?
Yeah, I was looking at our list here because I, I mean, that would take off one person, one gentleman from Vietnam. You know, if we do the crit- criteria that they were killed in action. So the top half, if you look at it, that's all.
Him off because he's MIA?
Yeah, that'd be, uh, Mr. Huber is from Vietnam, missing in action.
Right.
Okay, um, but the rest of them are, were killed in action.
And, and Brenda, here's an idea for you, just to make, to try and get something started that would be maybe on a smaller scale. And it would really give the community something to look at is maybe we, we honor the missing in action first.
Okay.
And, and, and have that, that could be a display that we could actually display at the museum. We could put them on the side of the buildings.
Well, because they. That's different. He, Matt was asking about POWs, prisoners.
POW or MIA, well POW is, would be alive, uh, if, if they were killed as a POW, then they would be in, you know, lost in, uh, during service.
Yeah.
But there, there's a record of, of the, uh, POWs. If they were, you know, if they were actually legally taken in as a prisoner of war, uh, and that, and if they've, they were killed while a POW, then they would be killed in service. If they were a POW that got released, they would be released. So.
So my thought is right now, I mean, we can start asking for photos, but we're really not going to have any photos for anybody from the Civil War. So what we could do is make some banners with like some, uh, what do they call them? What, silhouettes? Of a soldier or something?
We could do a silhouette or, you know, there, there are pictures of Civil War service people.
Yeah, but we only have one right now, I know at the museum.
Right. But if we put the word out, you'd be amazed at how many people come forward. The other thing is we, in order to print them this large, you have to be scanned properly. And, you know, you're not gonna do a, a three hundred DPI, uh, scan of a, a picture that's this big and expect it to be blown up. These, these banners are rather large when they're on the ground. Like the, the banners that you see on the poles around here now, those are six foot tall. These, these are not small little banners. They, they look smaller than that. It's, it's amazing, you know, when we had them in our, uh, in our office. And we're standing next to them, they're huge, but.
Maybe do four feet versus six feet?
Why?
If it's a couple hundreds cheaper per thing, maybe.
It's, the, the price at that size isn't that big, that bunch, that big of a deal.
Our goal should be to get organizations to adopt a banner.
Well, one of the problems you're gonna do with that is it's going to be, um, then you're gonna have to put somebody's name on the banner as a sponsor or something like that. What, uh, what I've heard that they've done out of Port Huron is they've actually done a fundraiser in the community really, you know, when, when you involve the VFWs and show them what you're doing, they do come together and the money starts to fly.
I've invited them and I, I've invited them to this meeting, so, but I'm just not getting any responses.
They, they, they want to see something first. They don't want, they're not gonna get involved. They think that they're, they're too busy at the VFW drinking beer.
What if we did flyers and went to the VF, local VFWs and put posted flyers at the establishments?
That, that would be a, a way to get started there anyways. Brenda, I don't know if, I'm gonna send you, let me see if I can find it first. I'll, I'll send you a, a copy of what we did. Maybe you can share it. Trying to find exit full screen. There we go. And I would have no problem donating the, the design work for, uh, for one here as well. And we don't want our name on the banner either.
That's appreciated.
I just, it, it need, it needs to stay, you know, non-commercial, uh, and properly done. And I, I agree with all of that. Let's see here. P, Port Huron, Port. Okay, um. Wanted to make sure I had it on this computer. I'm gonna email it to you, Brenda.
To the museum?
Which, which email address are you easy access to?
I can access either one. So I can, I'll go to the museum.
Okay. There we go. Okay, I just hit send.
Okay. Just waiting for it to come.
Yep, and, and I would, uh, I, I would even, I would even be willing to, um, oh, where am I here?
Okay, so which one do you want me to share? Here's, here's one of them.
Yeah, so that's, that's basically what it looks like that we used as a template. The two round logos in it, we actually took out, we, they're not using any of that. But the, but everything else stays the same. And then you've got the, the one with the three banners. Those are actually, uh, what they're showing or what they're using.
Let me go try to get in there. So here's, let's see.
So that's three banners right there and that'll give you an idea of, you know, three different, uh, wars, timeframes, whatever.
Now, see, if we tried to go to the archives, National Archives is actually shut down still, so we can't get any records from them right now either.
You're not gonna get big enough files from them anyways for, uh, for, for printing this size.
Okay.
You know, so you, you're gonna have to have photos or, uh, newspaper photos, you know, or, that's probably about the lowest quality that you're gonna get, but they've got to be scanned, uh, in a, in a special way. And, and if you have people that don't want to give up their image for, you know, a day or two, whatever. I can make arrangements that they can come to me. I can scan it while they wait and, you know, they would be able to do that.
What if we can, can't find a photo for a particular soldier?
They've, it's one of the, you know, I mean, there's gonna be something like that, but I think you're gonna find that you're gonna fill up the space with images anyways. I know Brenda was mentioning Civil War. Um, I would go with the ones that you can get pictures for. You know, rather than trying to, um, if, if nobody has a picture, then obvious, then, then chances are there's nobody around that's gonna remember that person either. You know?
And if there is an outcry for somebody and there is no picture, maybe just use a silhouette, but if we get a response or something.
I mean, if you get an outcry for somebody and then they, there's no picture, then cross that road when you come to it, but, uh, I, I would tend to, to go with the ones that we can do a complete program on. You know, there's not much sense doing, worrying about doing something that you've got nothing to, to complete it with. It's, it's obviously a banner with an image of the soldier and their information on it, so, um, you know, if you come down to the road and all of a sudden you have this, this blank square or, or a, like you said, a silhouette of a soldier, that, that's not gonna mean a lot to most people. They want to see the, the face. It's amazing. I've been to some of the unveilings of some of these and watched people just start crying seeing them. It's, it just, you know, just brings back those memories.
It was like that when I did, I got the brick for my grandfather for the World War Two memorial down here.
Yeah.
When they, they, uh, just, they unveiled them over at one of the Ford, uh, there's a Ford building down by the old Cobble Hall.
Yeah.
That we got to meet at.
But, might, that might be some, uh, one way to get it started slower and I'd know, Brian, if you were on when we were first talking about the MIA's, maybe start, uh, the first banners, uh, that are actually MIA's. And, and we could display those at the museum on the museum property. Wouldn't be hung by a pole, but you know, you, or by a, a light pole or anything, but you could actually just use a, uh, a, a pole in the ground and, and have the, the banners on there along the road, because there's not gonna be that many, I, I wouldn't think that are, uh, uh, M, or, or, what would we say, missing in action or?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we could do a smaller display of, of missing in action ones. You know, I, I don't know how many are, how many of the, of those we would have in Westland, but, um, Ed will be able to help us with where to get the listing and that, because he actually, uh, was, was lucky enough to pull in the, uh, the Navy, uh, personnel that, that looks after all of this stuff for the Navy. Then he got the Army. He, he's got all of the services involved in, in that, in his area. And, and it's not the recruiting offices. They're not gonna be the one to, to do it. Their, their, their job is to bring, you know, new, uh, new soldiers in, not, uh, not look after the ones that are already there or gone. So. But, uh, what, what I'll do is I'll, since, since I know you don't mind bringing him in to find out how, you know, what he recommends. If you want to schedule the next meeting, I can make sure I can invite him out to, to that and, and, uh, not out to it, but he can zoom in from his place.
Ask him what's a good date for us to meet, because, you know, right now it's just all, but I posted it, um, for a while for this one. I don't think I'm gonna get enough for everybody.
So let me, let me find out from him when he's available and, uh, because like I said, he has done, their, their goal is five hundred. And he's over three hundred now.
Are you talking about pictures?
Yeah.
Okay.
Three hundred individuals.
Do you suggest we do an ad asking for if, you know?
Once, once we have a plan together, yes, I would, I would, I would run that, that, that would be a community service ad. That's not something we're gonna charge for or anything like that.
Okay.
And, and of course, most of our readership is seniors, the older fam, the older group, so this might be the perfect place to do that.
You know who might actually, uh, participate in this is Joe.
Joe.
Her, Joe Johnson, her son, uh, I think he was killed in action.
Yeah, I don't have his name, do I?
I don't remember, uh, what his name was.
Well, and that's, and that's one of the reasons why you don't want to put out a list saying, these are the ones we're gonna do, because oops, you forgot somebody. Now you're, now you're the bad guy.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking of a blank, um, if you know of a soldier that was killed in action in any conflict, please, you know, we want to contact the museum for future project.
Yeah, do, do something, because that way you're leaving it up to them. If, if they haven't called you, then it's their fault, not yours. If, if you, if you, if you create a list and put it out there and say, this is what we got so far, somebody's gonna just get mad because they're gonna say, you don't have my son or my daughter or whatever.
Well, like I said, when I went to the mo- the monument over at the library, I may have missed some because it was covered with snow.
Yeah, yeah, so. But no, I, I mean, it, it would be nice to, you know, um, I'm sure Vic Barrow will help once it's rolling. Okay, but, and, but he's, he's not gonna get involved in it until after, after it's done and he can jump in and say, oh, look at what I'm doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. I have a question. Uh, so for Memorial Day, is it just people who died in action or is it people who died of wounds from action?
That's still considered died in action.
Yeah.
My opinion.
Okay, I'm just, just.
We were doing, we switched it to anybody killed while in service. It didn't have to be in battle.
Well, the, the banners would be anybody that was killed while in service, yes.
Okay, so it, like, uh, Albert Genon, uh, if we did Civil War, say, Albert Genon was wounded in the Battle of Fredericksburg. He died from his wounds like a year later.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would, he was, he was killed while in service technically, although he, although he was retired out, if you will. What, what were his wounds, by the way?
I don't, I think he got shot in the stomach.
Okay.
But that's a long time to survive.
If he was mustered, if he was mustered out, then I would say no.
Yeah.
Well, then, uh, uh, Lucius Chubb, um, he, uh, he died in the hospital. So he was still, he hadn't mustered out yet.
Then he would be one of them we would do.
And so would, uh, George Hubble, but we don't have a picture of him.
And, and, and those would be things to, to ask Ed for sure on the, uh, the one that, that died, you know, a year after.
I would say they can't be mustered out to qualify for this.
That's, I would think that as well, but I, he might be able to get, shed some more light on why it might be the other way. I, I, I can't think of it, but, you know, just in case. He, he's taken the heat already and that's why I'm saying, that's why I'd like to bring him in because he's, um.
Been there, done that.
He's been, yeah, exactly. He's been there, he's made the mistakes already. He's, he's pissed off the wrong people and the right people and, uh, he, he's done all of that stuff, so he's, he's got it, he's well experienced in it.
Just, this just happened to pop in my head. Surprise, but, um, people, if they start calling in and we know we're gonna get people calling in that didn't read what we're looking for. If they don't fit in the killed during service parameter, we can always offer them.
A veteran.
We, if they're a veteran of Westland at all and you want to donate eight by ten of them and get a little card, we're gonna do a photo album, maybe. Maybe we can start a eight by ten photo album of people and a little card with their rank, you know, their little bio or something and keep it in a photo album in the military room. Something to offer them if they want to be involved, but they don't have the parameters, just something to think about while they're on the phone to gather that information now.
Yeah. Well, here's an idea. I mean, I'm sure that we've all seen the, the pictures, the senior pictures in high schools where they have the big collages and they have the thing on the wall that you just sort of open up to different graduating classes. What if we were to take that information and, and build something along that line?
We have one of those that, uh, in the car- carriage shed, don't we, for the fire trucks or? You know.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about the, um, uh, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
You, you, you want to have one that you can update, you can add pages to, because, you, you know, and, and then, like, like Cassie said, you have a picture of them, you get that scanned, you put their, their information on it and, and maybe just do it as a tribute to Westland or Nankin Mills, uh, residents who served, uh, and, and do that.
And they have like those three ring binders even, a folder. We can make something for the cover and you get those photo sleeves that are archival and just put them right in those photo pockets, you know?
Well, what I was saying, do you know what I'm talking about in the, in the, um, carriage shed, Cass, Cassie, that it's a, a stand and it holds pictures and it's metal. It's like, um, some of the museums, museums put like senior classes in it from the schools, the graduating classes?
Yeah.
I think that's okay for special events. It's just when we start doing that kind of stuff, a little photo album in the military room, people can flip through. Versus, we have no room. We don't have the room for, you know, what I mean, big stands and.
But, and it's, you know, I, I'm not from, although I've been in the museum, I'm not that familiar with that, that room, so.
Yeah, and we have more historical stuff we could hang on the walls versus that.
But that would be a nice tribute to have is, you know, a, a photo of every person who lived in Westland or Nankin Mills. And, and now's the time to get them, uh, done. My, I write, my best friend was in the Coast Guard, so I would be happy to submit his stuff. And he's still alive, by the way, you know, but, uh.
Then you better ask his permission.
Yeah, oh, I, I don't, I wouldn't.
But we should have a photo release so we could use.
You're not, you're not selling these. You're not using them for profit and, you know, now you can have them sign a release for the banners and things like that. But there's really no need for that even. Um, this is not, this is a historical use. It's not a, you're, you're not gonna be selling these banners to anybody. Uh, you're not doing it for profit. You're not doing it, uh, for any, any other use like that. If you were to, if you were selling postcards with their picture on it, uh, and making money, that would be different. But even as a nonprofit, you, I don't think you'd need that, but, uh, but you could, you could have them sign a waiver if you wanted to, but, don't get too, too technical on that stuff. Have them fill out the information on each sheet and, and sign it. That's all I would do. You know, maybe put their, their name, uh, when they joined the service, what, what, uh, what service they were, they joined, uh, the years that they, uh, you know, when did they go in, when did they come out? And what was their, you know, beginning rank and their ending rank? I think that's all we would need, you know? We're not really, you know, we're not really looking at keeping up when they were born and when they died. Because we might not get notified when somebody dies if they're alive when they go in. I, I mean, that's what I'm thinking. If, if somebody thinks of another, more information, speak up.
Well, I was thinking that the person has to actually, when they enlisted, lived in Nankin or Westland.
Yeah.
Okay, because like for me, my stepfather, he enlisted up north, but he lives in Westland now. I don't think that he should be eligible for something up north, not down here.
Correct, yeah, same as my buddy. He's living in, uh, uh, Florida now, but he was living here when he signed up and his family lived here for a number of years afterwards and. So he was the, uh, he joined the Coast Guard. His worst station was, uh, um, Los Angeles, California. Well, no, he, I guess his worst station was, he was the commander who closed down Governor's Island. So that was his worst station. He was, he was in, uh, Los Angeles, Honolulu, and then mustered out when he closed out, uh, Governor's Island.
Oh, wow.
So. Yeah.
All right.
Pretty proud of him, quite honestly.
So what I think we should probably, we. So what I think we should probably, we need to talk to your friend. Mr. Wexler, okay, but we should also come up with a form. Gather the information. And then, you know, kind of come up with something to put in the paper, saying, you know, we have an ongoing project coming up, or we got an ongoing project going on, if you, you know, like to submit.
Were you in the service, we, or were you or a loved one in the service, we're looking for you now. You know, and then then go into detail, you know, we have a couple of different projects going on. You know, for anyone who was in the service who lived in Westland and and enlisted at the time, Westland or Nankin Mills and enlisted at the time. Were, do you know someone who was killed while in service? Or do you know of someone who was MIA? There's, so there's three projects right there.
Yeah. Well, I don't want to get too overwhelmed.
Yeah. Well, at least, at least two of them can be smaller projects, and covers everything.
To build on what Cassie was talking about, what we could do instead of the the flip chart thing from the the carriage shed or a binder, is we can take all the the photos, put them on to a like a flash drive or an external hard drive, and hook them up into a small TV and have that in the in the military room, so it can flip through.
Yeah, so you could scan the pictures, that that would be a cool way to do it, it wouldn't take up much space, and then just, you know, scan the image, and we can put the information right on the image, so it would all be on the screen.
Yep.
We could even do a template.
Photo things, I don't even think they have to be in the, hooked to a computer, they, a digital.
Those, a lot of those digital picture frames, there's a limit, my, I bought one from my mom, you can only put so many pictures on those.
Yeah.
So having them on a, what?
They're not like up to fifty pictures or anything?
No, no. So having them on a flash drive or an external hard drive and hooking them up to a computer or a TV
Yeah.
would be a better way to go, and you can get a T, a thirty inch TV or twenty four inch TV for a hundred bucks.
Didn't we have one already in Collins?
Uh, yeah, but it's, I I have to look at it, I mean, Mike set it, set that one up with other things, so, I mean, it's the same concept. But for this, I would go with a flat screen, maybe hanging on the wall.
Yeah, I I bought a, well, actually, my monitor that I'm on here is is a forty, forty two inch, it is, I think.
We just need a small one.
That, that's, that's why when I'm, when I'm taught, when somebody's talking, I have to move my head back and forth from one side of the screen to the other, to see, to see, to see who's talking. But you can get, you know, for forty two inch, you can get for around two hundred bucks, and, you know. So what I'm saying is you don't need a, you know, it's not a big budget kind of thing, and that's, that's a cool way to do it. And and you could have two external hard drives, so you could continuously back them up, so while one is playing, you could be adding new files, and then, you know, once you've scanned a number of them, you know, back up the other, the other one and plug in the, so you rotate the two back and forth.
You're so smart.
All right, so kind of seems like we need to.
There's another one over here, you know, I mean, these things are that's what I, that's what my life is on now.
All right, so do we want to table stuff until we talk to Mr. Wexler at this point?
I think that that would be a good use of our time.
Everybody in agreement?
Yeah, we really can't go much further unless we just gather preliminary, make flyers and stuff, and share them and for approval, other than.
I mean, we may be able to do the ad right now, just to start gathering photos.
We can gather, put the ad together and get that ready, because the next paper comes out is is until April anyways. And by then we'll have met Ed, so if we need to tweak it in some manner, we can.
Who would like to design the the ad?
If you get me all the information, I'll have Gail design it.
Okay. All righty.
Okay, yeah, just, you get me all the information you want on it, and and she can, she could put it together, she's the one that designed those banners, and maybe we can, I can get her to start working on that. What do we have, like, in in the banner we did for Port Huron, it's got the Blue Water Bridge and the American flag in there.
The only thing I was thinking of is, isn't there an eagle and a some kind of Westland symbol, or if you don't want to stay Westland, we are in Wayne County, you can do.
We are the all American city.
Well, the all American city is very simple, we do an American flag in it, but would be sort of nice to have something more, what what else says Westland? And but, believe me, I'm asking this because we get stumped on it all the time, you know, what what do we have as our? You know?
Can we put some polls out there?
Some what?
A poll?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we could do that.
When you think of Westland, what do you, what what image comes to mind or something like that, what?
What comes to mind, and we're gonna get.
You like to use, not the image of this, the inhabitants.
Yeah, what 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 image makes you think of the city of Westland?
The only other thing is like that flag and how you had the Blue Water Bridge, because Westland, to me, doesn't have a significant thing that just is Westland, nor does Livonia, nor does Redford, I don't know, but taking the, because I've seen, like, backed out, the Rennesan, like, that Detroit River skyline, because we are Wayne County, and that's the only other thing.
Well, yeah, but that's, we don't want to put Detroit on a Westland project, not, and believe me, I'm not against Detroit, I love Detroit. But it's, it's still a Detroit landmark.
Right.
You know? We really, I'm trying to think. The only landmark I can think of that says Westland is Nankin Mills.
Yeah, that's what I say, Nankin Mills.
Yeah. So.
Well, we can do the historic village.
Yeah.
Make it a landmark, finally.
It, you know, so there's, there's a lot of different things we can do, but let's try and come up with that concept, find out, you know, let, yeah, let's do a poll and and say, what makes you think of Westland, because every month, I, every month, I try and come up with something that says Westland for the paper.
Does the city have on their stuff?
They have their, the city symbol. Yeah, I I've had this conversation with Craig as well. Okay, so it's, it's just one of those things, they they, we all fight with it, we're, there's, we we need to find the distinguishing item that says, this is Westland.
I mean, we, could we use the park logo? Could we use the park logo?
What's the park logo?
It's kind of like the octagon house, that, you know, the, that we have on our shirts and stuff.
Yeah, and like the one I used for the the Vintage Auto Festival and.
I mean, we should try to, that's promoting our park as well as, you know, making people think of Westland.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could use the octagon house, you know, symbol. But and and I, that one, sir, I I like that house as well, and it photographed cool, it's got some different designs that I like on it. Let's just.
Oh, my God, cool, do you want it just like the house? Or a cool scenery, because there's a lot of pictures, like, we all take with deer in the foreground and.
Well, no, we just, we should just do the buildings.
Yeah. We could even do a collage of all the buildings along the top there, and then have the flag come down the sides. I mean, I I have, I've got good, 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 high res images of every building now. Some with snow, some without.
I would do it without snow.
Yeah. Well, you know, and it's, it's sort of sad, because most of the buildings are all white, so there's not a lot of color in it.
Well, what do you guys think, when I think of Westland, what stands out, Westland, Ford Road? Just the road.
Yeah.
The parks, when the City Hall was on the, on Ford Road, I used to think of that, I don't even think of Warren anymore, that's just a, ugh.
Yeah, I I never liked the City Hall building on Ford Road, but to to me, because I grew up in the area, was always Nankin Mills.
Well, it should be, I I mean, I think our park should be the gem of the city, actually.
Yeah.
So.
I agree.
And then, you know, you put these on with these banners and that, and then people say, oh, where's that place at again, or they they can't say they don't know where it's at.
You know what, Brenda, I think that's a great idea, because, you know, we, we always have that problem with people that don't know, they drive by it every day and they don't know where it is. And so let's, let's try and and utilize the park image somehow, I'll, we'll come up with something.
You guys in agreement? No.
Yep, yep.
Okay. All right.
And seeing as it's the historic village that's that's doing the part project.
And it's central, it's, we're the center of the city, actually.
Is it really?
Pretty much, yeah, we're in the middle of Westland.
Okay.
If you think about it.
I try not to think. Jeff, it's after five, my brain is fried.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion to end the meeting?
Motion adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Don and Cassie, all right, so then let me know when the next, the gentleman, Mr. Wexler, can meet with us, and we'll schedule that next.
I will do that.
All right.
He's usually faster at calling me back, so he he must be in the middle of something.
Okay.